7:30. If you will all please rise first for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone in the front row here. If you could, we have a lot of people. I know you all want to talk, so if you could just like, I'm sorry. We'll do that.
Mayor Rovella?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Ms. Drysbaum?
Here.
Ms. Chronicle?
Here.
Ms. Larison?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Pepitone is going to be absent this evening. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Here.
If everyone just like, I'm not going to give a specific timeline, but there's a lot of people, so just if you could be wary about person with you trying to also say something, so we get everybody a chance to say something. We've got several presentations tonight, and the first one is going to be from an auditing firm that is going to come up and talk to the council about their firm. This is Barbicane Thornton and Company, LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tim Sawyer. I'm a partner of Barbicane Thornton Company. We submitted a proposal.
Hold on one second, my mic's not working. Is that better?
Yeah, it's better. Okay. My name is Tim Sawyer. I'm a partner of Barbicane Thornton Company. We submitted an RFP for our first, you know, proposal for request to be your auditors for the upcoming fiscal years. I'm here tonight with Pam Baker, who is our managing partner, to, you know, express our interest and... I'm the test speaker for everybody here. All right. So like I said, I'm here with Pam Baker, who's our managing partner. We're here to express our interest in being your auditors. We submitted the proposal to you. It should be in your packets, so we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I'm not going to bore you by going through the entire proposal, but we have for you tonight's a one-page handout. So while I give that out, I will let Pam start talking.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for everyone turning out this evening to hear about an audit RFP. Even though the clear room, I don't know. This is a very exciting night for us. So as Tim intervenes me, my name is Pam Baker, and what Tim is handing now for you is, as he said, a one-page of what we pulled as you went through the RFP response that we submitted to you. We're hopeful that what's submitted on this one page really summarizes the depth of what we hope that we included in that proposal. And so I'll touch on some of the things here. I think first and foremost, and it starts out by talking about our experience, but one of the things that's very unique about our CPA firm, we are a public accounting firm, but we are an audit-only CPA firm. We do not run a tax practice and an audit practice. We're devoted to the audit market. And within that audit market focus, we're focused on specific industries. So we audit governments, including schools and things, and municipal authorities, we audit nonprofit organizations, and that summarizes the boutique services of our firm. And so our experience is going to include a large number of clients. So we have over 100 governmental entities that we provide audit and accounting services to. All of our partners serve the audit side, so we serve governments, and so whether it's Tim as your audit partner, we have other audit partners, we're all dedicated to this market. So you have the breadth of having not just one partner, in this case it would be Tim, dedicated to you, but you have backups as well. Because once again, I'll focus on the fact that we're not an audit only firm. That means our staff, regardless of who is here on your team or is part of your audit team, they're going to know governments. They're going to have audit governments, they're going to understand the rules of Pennsylvania, they're going to know the difference between a township and a borough, and what DCED requires, and they're all going to be very much educated on that. We stay focused on this market. The way we grow this market is that we participate with, because we're an institute of CPAs, we are the liaisons, and we work on a committee that is the CPA community, the PICPA, and the DCED. We have a working group. Most recently, we work on that work, we actually are chair that working group. Recently, we just updated and revised the municipal authorities report. So we're very much involved on the forefront of what's going on in Harrisburg as it relates to accounting and auditing issues for governments. We're very well-known and respected across Pennsylvania, mostly on the eastern part of the state. Hopefully you found us, you know, by virtue of the fact that we do have a good reputation in working with the governmental sector. The other thing that we do, because we are uniquely an audit firm, if you audit governments, it's imperative, once you graduate from college, that you earn your CPA certification. It's additionally important if you audit governments. You know, you can be a tax preparer and maybe not necessarily, you may have some other specialty, but our staff are all focused on being CPAs. And all but our newest staff, who are still going through that process, are CPAs. We also hold a number of other designations, whether it's the CGFM, which is the Certified Government Finance Managers Designations, the CGAP, the Certified Government Auditing Professionals Designation, the CFE, the Certified Fraud Examiners. We have all of that represented on our staff and throughout our firm. We stay entrenched in this. Our knowledge base is extensive as it relates to governments. The reason we do this, 40 years ago, our firm was started, and 40 years ago, our first client was a nonprofit. The second client was a government, for our Glen Eltons in Delaware County. And so we've been in this market, that was a very determined choice by our founding partners to work, they wanted to support our communities, but use their technical skills to do that. And so it was a market that we started with 40 years ago, and we stayed committed to it because we feel it gives us an opportunity to contribute to our communities in a positive way. Hopefully you found that the pricing included in the RFP was competitive and that were cost-effective for you. And then the last thing that I would focus on, it's the last bullet here, from a governmental perspective, we think it's critical, and that's timeliness. You know, it's not uncommon for governments, we hear it over and over again, that, well, you know, yeah, it's good that we have an audit and we need to have the audit, but, you know, maybe we get better pricing if we do it outside of tax season, or maybe it's, you know, we're not as significant. We have two different philosophies. We think if there's a deadline, we should meet it. And the DCED has a December 1 deadline for audit reports to be submitted. We are committed to that. We encourage our clients, we work with our clients, we bring on a new client that's not used to that timeline, we work to get them to that timeline, because we think it's important, timely audited information from your government is important. It's important to report to your citizens, it's important to report to the legislative bodies in Harrisburg and others. So that's one of the things that we really pride ourselves on, is our ability to meet deadlines for all of our clients. So that's a synopsis, like I said, I hope that summarizes what we found in the response to your RFP. Questions? Happy to entertain any questions that you might have as a result of reviewing the RFP or what we just talked about.
Could you perhaps comment on your experience with small-town audits?
Absolutely, absolutely. Small governments, so we have, see, Tim did the pageant effort out. So we audit boroughs, a number of boroughs, we have first-class townships, second-class townships, and honestly, when we talk about, on that first bullet, that says we have 40 municipalities, the majority of those are going to be municipalities kind of in your size right now. And so you've got cash basis clients that do only a DCED report, all the way up to clients that do full-blown, you know, capital presentations. But, you know, that's what we're doing right now. Today kicked off four small government audits, you know, because we start, because you're near the cash basis at the end of the year, you're ready to go.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone to ask?
I just have one on your schedule. You've mentioned typically you start in December, or thereabouts. Will there be any problems, shouldn't we decide to go with you, starting in mid to late January, to be able to meet the April 1 deadline?
The sooner you make the decision, you know, the quicker we can get you into the queue. But if you make a decision soon and we can get, the most important thing that we do in December is get third-party confirmations issued, and so that just takes some coordination on your end and our end. So as soon as you can make a decision, the quickest that we can get those confirmations in the mail, that then gets our timeline in line with meeting the deadline. So we should be able to do it.
Anyone else? No? Thank you very much for coming out, giving the presentation, and short notice too, we appreciate that. And everyone did receive this, and then we can now get back to you then. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you, could we just ask, do you have an estimated timeline for me, not put you on the spot, to make a decision?
I think we're going to entertain it tonight. I'll ask council if they would like to make a decision, what we're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Enjoy your screen.
Our next presentation is from the Bucks County Planning Commission, and this would be Michael Rodig, who is their senior planner, and he's here to talk about our Marshall Downtown blueprint print for the future. Please welcome him.
Okay, by present over here. Okay, I apologize for the setup here. I am going to get the copies of the presentation to Scott, who will then distribute to the rest of council, and I assume that the presentation will be available online as well. So anybody who can't see quite make out through this screen here, you'll be able to sort of review the presentation in your leisure at home then. Okay. Just to give you a little bit of background on this project, we began with an outreach to Morrisville in about 2015. We met right at this table, and we spoke with the Economic Development Corporation, and we kicked around a lot of different ideas on what we could do for Morrisville Borough. And I think what we really kept coming back to was the downtown. What can we do for the downtown? I think that it's a real focus of the community, and people really see its potential, and, you know, we were looking to establish that relationship on how we could help, you know, revitalize that downtown, make it the place that I think everybody thinks it should become. So that initiative was started through our Municipal Economic Development Initiative. This is a program that we have in the county where Bucks County Planning Commission provides planning services to various communities around Bucks County, and we provide those services for free. So there's no, you know, big contract that municipal has to spend in order to get these economic development plans together. And we, you know, and it's with the idea that there's a lot of great places around Bucks County, and they just need a little bit of help in moving things forward. And we think we've been able to help out a lot of different communities, such as Morrisville, and it's a really nice program that the county has to offer. So really, our next step in this process was to have our open house meeting, and we had that meeting back in March of 2017. And what we did is we had, you know, what I described as an open house, you know, just let people come in for about an hour or so. We had a number of display boards up here, and we got people's ideas on what they felt was important for Morrisville Downtown. And we also gave them some background information and also provided some concept plans for what the future of Morrisville, you know, could be like. People were pretty excited about that meeting. There was a lot of positive energy flowing through the room. You know, people just wanted to talk to us. And even some of the people that showed up a little bit skeptical, you know, by the end of the meeting, we're excited, we're asking how we can get involved. So that particular meeting, I think, helped serve a couple different purposes. One, it helped residents understand the economic forces that are facing the downtown. It gathered a resident opinion on the direction and, or direction of future potential initiatives, provides summary of current conditions and a vision of what is possible, and like I said, it created that energy, you know, momentum to catalyze real change in the downtown. So one of the things I wanted to do and talk a little bit about, something, I'll try to make this pretty brief, and we talked a little bit about that initial meeting, was, excuse me. What is actually going on economically in the downtown? Why is it that the downtown seems to struggle a little bit? There are some viable businesses, but you don't really compare Morrisville to, say, like a Doylestown Borough, or compare it to New Hope, where these are really, you know, vibrant, vibrant, well-developed, very economically well, well, I should say, their communities are doing very well. Those downtowns are doing very well. Morrisville, you can't really say the same thing about the downtown. It doesn't have that vibrancy, vibrancy, you don't have a lot of people walking around every day, you don't have a lot of shoppers, you don't have that energy that you see in those other communities. And what is going on is that there are, if you take a look at this particular slide here, we have three different drive times from the center of the borough. The green is zero to five minutes drive time. The red is a zero to 10 minutes drive time. And the blue is a zero to 15 minutes drive time, all from this central point here, right at Pennsylvania and Bridge Street, right at that corner there. And this analysis was done by Esri, they're a GIS company, and they provide demographic data based on those geographic areas. And I'm just going to go right to the punchline here. In that zero to five-minute drive time, there's a population of 26,000 people. And the median household income is $61,000. Okay, that's the median, right-in-the-mill household income for that demographic area, right in that green geographic area. If we move out to the zero to 15 minute, and that's that entire geographic area from that central point out to the blue area, we go to a population of 390,000 people, and we go to a median household income of $84,000 for, of income. So currently what Morrisville's downtown is doing, it's serving really probably that green area, and probably maybe a little bit less. It's a captured market. I mean, the, it's a local captured market, so the types of businesses that are in that market, with some exceptions, are generally just serving that small area. If you look at a place like Doylestown, you look at a place like New Hope, their market is huge. I mean, you have people traveling from, you know, New Jersey, from some places from New York, just to visit places like Doylestown and New Hope, because those places are well-marketed, they're well-promoted, people have a very positive image of those places. They know they're going to have a good time in these places. Morrisville's challenge is to break out of that green area, to bring in businesses, bring in an experience to that downtown that's going to get people from outside this market to visit Morrisville. And that's what's going to create that economic revitalization. So that just sort of, you know, helps people understand, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. It's not about putting up nice street trees or lights or period lighting or awnings or attractive facades. It's not just about that. It's about getting people wanting to visit the borough, and that's really what the challenge Just want to go over some of the survey responses. The overall vision for Morrisville's downtown is that of a retail recreation destination. Residents emphasize street amenities, special events, road enforcement, and pedestrian environment. Top business practices included restaurants, coffee shops, attractions, shopping and home shops. And then we had a recreation display board, which emphasized, and residents generally emphasized, access to waterfront, entertainment activities, and maintenance of the park areas. All right. I just want to go over some of the community visiting that we did. These were just sort of concepts that we presented to the community. It just sort of gave a range of options in terms of physical improvements and how the borough might want to proceed in terms of implementing that vision of that downtown. This slide shows the parking lot that is next to the Wells Fargo Bank. What we have here is an exit driveway, and it's nothing special, nothing that's really going to attract you by. What we call this is a tier-one improvement. So what we're looking to do with the quote-unquote "tier-one" improvement is provide things like landscaping, signage, benches, outdoor seating, those types of improvements. And what we did is we mocked up a little bit of landscaping, a park bench, a bike rack here, just a little bit of grary, and that really kind of improves that whole streetscape there. So when people are walking by there, they're not really greeted by parking lot, they're greeted by, greeted by a park bench, they're greeted by a space that is valued. And it's really important in that public realm, because you are promoting an idea of Morrisville. You want to promote that idea that these spaces, these public, semi-public spaces in downtown Morrisville are valued and that they are important to the community. All right. So this is just another real, I want to try to go over this real briefly, another tier-one, what we call tier-one improvement. This is Anthony's Pizza here. If we want to add those types of improvements to, let's say, this is like Anthony's Pizza, we might want to make it look like this, add some street trees, a little bump outs, some crosswalks, some outdoor seating, just sort of adds to that public space, that public realm that Morrisville wants to show the rest of the world that, you know, that they This is what we call a tier-one improvement. This is, you know, fixing up, you know, what Morrisville already has. This is the Lehi Rubber Factory. Now, I'm not going to vouch for what this Lehi Rubber Factory is going to look like in the future, but this was the concept back in March that we presented. And you can see that it's seen much better days. We have, you know, generally this has an abandoned look to it, the street, trees overgrown there, generally not very nice looking. But if we look to, we make what we have, we can have a brand-new building there. I mean, essentially, that's what it looks like. You're taking that existing past, or that example of the past that Morrisville has, Lehi Rubber Factory, and you're making it anew. You're, you know, valuing those old structures, but you're also providing some value to the rest of the community. We even, I think, incorporated the planned Bridge Street Crossing there, brings to low there on the home building. So looking at what we call our tier-three improvement, we go from smoke shops right there on Delmore, which I know everybody likes so much, and then what we can do is we can block a brand-new building there. I think this is a great example of how you can, you know, use zoning and use new development to really transform space. That's a key location. You're coming right off the bridge, you're coming right into the heart of Morrisville, and most people are greeted by the smoke shop. Or most people, I shouldn't say, everybody's greeted by a smoke shop. You want to be greeted by that, something that you're impressed by, like, wow, what is going on there? And that's something that Morrisville can look to do in the long term, you know, through redevelopment, things like that can happen. All right, let's just get to the blueprint here. What we did is we came up with approach for Morrisville Borough, that's what we call the blueprint. We use the, generally, what we tried to do is use the Main Street approach. The Main Street organization has been around for, I don't know, like 30, 40 years now. They're a part of National Trust for Historic Preservation. They've been very successful in revitalizing downtowns across America. So they have like a, well, it used to be a four-step approach, but now it's like a three-step with four subcategories on the second step, plus their third step there. So their approach is to identify the community vision for success. We, I think we've already done that. We had our open-house meeting, a lot of work went into that community vision. I think that that community vision is a general goal. You know, there's always going to be feedback, you know, I think we want to move in this direction, but you always want to, you know, think about how things are moving along, and maybe you want to tweak it here. That's going to be an ongoing discussion, because a lot of it involves the community as a whole. I think that, you know, the approaches that whatever organization comes out of this, you know, should be, you know, remain on target. Second thing is community transformation strategies. This is the old four-point approach that the Main Street organization used to have. That includes economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. A really key aspect of that, creating those community transformation strategies, is that economic vitality. I think that can be somewhat overlooked. As I mentioned before, people don't go to downtowns because they have furious street lighting, they don't go to downtowns because they have nice sidewalks or beautiful signage or wonderful landscaping. They go to, because there's a destination there that they want to visit, and, you know, perhaps they'll spend their money there. So that economic aspect of community transformation, I think, is extremely important. Design is important. You want to keep that design consistent throughout and with not necessarily a theme, but at least an idea, and not sort of be haphazard. Promoting, as I mentioned before, get the word out to other communities, get the word out to, you know, surrounding communities, get the word out to surrounding states. Morrisville's on the upswing. That's a, another important strategy there. And then finally, the organization, which, you know, if you're not organized, then you're not going to get anything done. And I'll talk a little about impact and measurement in a few slides here. All right, so let's just get to the recommended strategies. We had a number of recommended strategies. I'll just try to briefly go through these and get to any questions that people might have. Understanding the strengths and weaknesses of the physical conditions of the downtown, I think that this plan goes over what some of those strengths and weaknesses are. I'm sure you're well aware of any others. Promote the vision of a new Morrisville, get buy-in from residents, property owners, and developers, so that everybody has sort of a clear idea what that vision is. You know, we're talking about, one of the things I was thinking about today is that we are talking about a lot of, you know, talking about properties, we're talking about people's livelihood. So certainly, you want those property owners, the people who own those properties, to be a part of this process. There has to be some incentive for them to get on board, and, you know, certainly a monetary, a good monetary outcome for them is certainly a big incentive, you know, whatever that may be, even just increased property values. One thing that's going to be important in the future is to develop a parking study to identify locations, supply and demand, potential sites for public parking, and share parking opportunities. Play should, or the process should apply the Main Street Centers model for downtown revitalization to Morrisville. So I think that we should, you know, try to stick with that. So I think that we should, you know, try to stick with that Main Street model. A big issue is addressing lighted areas and property code violations. In our times, that we were able to come to the downtown and take a walk around, some properties were very well-maintained and others not so much. So I think a program of light removal and, you know, code enforcement is going to be very important. The C1 commercial district is not adequate. That needs to be revised. Developers, that's one of the first things they're going to look at is, well, I want to develop in Morrisville. I'm really excited about their downtown vision. But they're going to look at the zoning code and that's going to be a challenge for them. And the other aspect of the zoning code is that you want to have those uses, you want to have those standards that puts forth that vision so that when developers, developers don't have to come in individually and say, well, I have this idea and, you know, I'm going to ask for variances to get, put forward this idea. And I want to do such a, you know, use these standards and use this landscaping. And then another developer wants and has a different idea. If you have the zoning code, ready to go. If you have those design standards, ready to go. And that helps put forward that vision of what you, what the, what Morrisville Borough is looking for. So I think it's very important that that zoning district gets revitalized. Promotional marketing activities to change the public perception. These are activities like festivals, different various events throughout the year, help promote the downtown, help give that idea that things are moving forward. When, excuse me. When, when things get done, you want to promote that. You want to, you know, tout that to the community. You want to tout that to newspapers, you know, television, any type of media. Any way you can get that word out, that Morrisville is, it's on the move. Things are getting done here. Look what we just did. You want to change that public perception because everybody knows that public perception is out there. And I think a lot of people in this community, there's a reason why so many people are out here tonight is because you feel differently about Morrisville. And, you know, I'm glad that there's that energy that people want to prove that outside, you know, that outside world, that those outside voices prove them wrong. And then the final recommendation is that an independent nonprofit do sole responsibility for the revitalization of this district, who's, as they're sole responsibility, be creative to really, you know, start tackling these issues. One of the great advantages of an independent nonprofit is that they're not sort of beholden to government. Government kind of moves slowly. Nonprofits are pranimler, they're faster-moving. I think they can take in more community voices. You know, they're certainly eligible for all, or at least most of the funding.